Good evening. It's 6:00 PM, so it's time to start the meeting. I'd like to welcome everybody to the December 12, 2024, Meeting of the Barnstable Town Council. In accordance with Mass. Journal Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, I must inquire whether anyone is recording this meeting, and if so, to please make your presence known. Obviously, the town is recording it. It will be available via the town website, YouTube, and streaming. So we encourage you to watch. Tonight, we have a little bit different meeting in that we have three councilors who are not present, but they will be participating via Zoom. The council, last February, I believe it was, or March, adopted a policy to allow participation via Zoom in cases of illness or other extraordinary circumstances. And we have three councilors that are not able to be with us tonight, so they will be participating via Zoom. This will result in a necessity to have a roll call vote on all matters. Okay, Madam Park, if you would.
Counselors Bloom.
Here.
Burdick.
Present.
Clark.
Here.
Crowe.
Here.
Leveque.
Here.
Ledke.
Here.
Mendez.
Here.
Mary.
Here.
Penn.
Here.
Schnapp.
Here.
Starr.
Here.
Tamish.
Here.
Turkelson.
Here.
We have 13.
Thank you. At this point, I'd like Counselor Clark to introduce our veteran who will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you very much, Vice President Tamish. Today, Mr. Ned Dashner has served in the Marine Corps for four years, from 1980 through 1984. He began his service as a combat engineer. During his last two years, he transitioned to work as an avionics technician servicing Marine Corps attack and fighter aircraft. He worked on A-4 Skyhawks and F-4 Phantom. Ned's son is a petty officer in the Navy. His son speaks Russian fluently and is heading back for a second tour in the Mediterranean and Middle East. It is a pleasure to have Mr. Ned Dashner lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening. Thank you very much for your service.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you could remain standing for a moment of silence, and we'd like to dedicate this moment of silence to the memory of Tom Mullen. Tom dedicated much of his life to the town of Barnstable, where he raised his family and served his community with distinction. From 1973 to 1987, he was the superintendent of the Barnstable Fire Water, District Water Department. He was hired by the town of Barnstable as Director of the Department of Public Works on March 14, 1988, and retired on October 31, 2002. A passionate advocate for environmental conservation, Tom was instrumental in promoting groundwater protection and was a steadfast supporter of the Barnstable Land Trust. An accomplished artist, Tom's paintings were treasured by many. His humor and wit were unmatched, leaving a lasting impression on all who knew him. Having been the object of some of his wit and humor, I can certainly testify to that. So if we could have a moment of silence for Tom, please. Thank you. Okay, we will now open public comment. As a reminder, you are welcome to come up to the podium. You have three minutes. If you could keep it to that, that would be very much appreciated. And is there anyone here for public comment that would like to speak? Mr. Brigham?
Yes, Rick Brigham from Hyannis. Thank you for this opportunity. Please elect a council president who will include the residents. There are nearly 50,000 of us, many of whom are brilliant. They could help inform you. Better a slow, smart decision by the many than a quick, bad decision by the few. It seems that a past combination of 13 councilors made what seemed to be a bad decision. They brought Avangrid, a Goliath, into our town. A quick search of this Goliath shows multiple suits. In short order, this Goliath, Avangrid, has proven itself to be incompetent. A 70-ton blade fell into the waters south of Martha's Vineyard, permanent pollution. Why are we still working with them? Turbines, with little research, I have found that turbines are not green. I have read that turbines cannot outspend the hydrocarbons it takes to build them. I've heard it said that this Goliath goes to towns with councils. It's easier to convince 13 rather than 200 or 2,000 because we would ask questions. According to John Crowe's statement, "You gave away our voice, our leverage." In fact, residents did ask questions, but did not get answers. Why did you give away our leverage and not stay involved? Was it for the money? For the green of money? Did you forfeit the green of the environment? Did you know Maura Healy and Julian Seer received donations from this Goliath? Boston Herald, July 29, 2024. During Matt Leveque's previous term, you gave away the Article 97 protection of Craigville Beach. So, like Coval, will we have a warning sign on our beach like on the side of a pack of cigarettes? The sign says that the same company that dropped a 70-ton blade is responsible for EMF safety. This does not inspire confidence. Will these resident beaches become unusable? There was a petition about it at a recent executive session. It seems you did not abide by the town charter. There was even an active suit about the procedure, yet half of you voted against the residents' request. We hear late in the proceedings that there was a threat of litigation from the Goliath. Are you making concessions? Are town attorneys advocating for this Goliath out of fear? Is Goliath intimidating you, residents? The agreement with this Goliath is on the Town Council page, bottom right. Read it and see if we can get out of this. There are smarter ways to be green. For the cost of 115 turbines, every household in Barnstable could have geothermal installed. Imagine heating and cooling our homes from the constant temperature within the earth, permanent, quintessential green without consequences. Finishing, for primary sources, go to green-oceans.org. My message? Please vote for a council president who will include the residents. Faith and a slingshot and a stone took care of the first Goliath. Perhaps if you include the residents, we might do the same. By the way, three minutes for comment is insufficient. You need to have conversations with us. Sincerely, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Barbosa.
Carlos Barbosa from Hyannis. Thank you for this opportunity. And I want to ask you folks to be more clear regard to the zoning, if you guys are going to change something in the future, because I'm a small investor in this town, and I don't know what's going to happen next year, or the next few years. If it is any case that you guys are going to change the zoning, I'm going to go with my money elsewhere, because it's not good for me to know, don't know what's going to happen in the future. And two or three weeks ago, we have an incident in town with some minority organization, and Matt Leveque was a big instrument to help us out. I'm here supporting you for president, if I can. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Susan Batista, and I wanted to first thank you all for your service. I think you're all wonderful leaders. To be up here and to give your time and effort to make our town a better place qualifies you all to be leaders. And we very much appreciate all of your services and all the things that you do. But I do think there is one leader who stands out to me personally and to many of the people that I'm here representing. As you know, I've been up before, and I've been creating housing for graduates of Riverview School so they can start living their independent adult lives here in Hyannis because it's such a beautiful, walkable, wonderful community. And there's been one councilman who's always been there as my partner, and that's Mr. Matt Leveque. Anytime we've called him, he's come. When we've had shows, he's come and sang with us. He sings karaoke with us. We see him on the streets when we walk by, and he says hello. He comes to our art openings. We see him performing at Katuat Center for the Art. We see him on the Fourth of July with greeting us all on the green. He delivers food to veterans. I mean, I think no one loves Hyannis or Barnstable more than Mr. Matt Leveque. His whole heart and soul is into it. And to me, that's a leader through and through. I don't think there's anything he wouldn't do for our community, and I think that really makes him exceptional. And I really thank him for everything he's done for my community and for everyone else. I think he'd be a wonderful leader for this group, and I thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'm Fritz Kleckie. I'm Susan Batista's husband. Just wanted to echo some of the things she said. And again, thank you all for your service. I think, you know, we're all in this room because we care about the community. And one thing that some of the folks at 525 South Street, you've probably seen in this very hall, have never been involved in government affairs before. These are Riverview grads, including my daughter. I think one of the things that has made them feel welcome is really Matt Leveque. And I think that's a, these are young people. These are 22, 23-year-olds who, this is their first introduction to government, to how a system works. And being welcoming to them has been a great thing. And Matt, as a leader here, has really given them someone they can see out on the street, they can go up to. And that's very unusual, to have someone like that out in the community. So again, I just wanted to echo Susan in my support for Matt Leveque for leader of the council. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Megan Mort. I'm from Marsden's Mills. I would echo the comments ahead of me, especially the commenter that said that we should be electing a leader who strives for inclusivity. And I don't think there's a better argument for that than electing Matt Leveque as Town Councilor leadership. To, I'm not going to repeat the folks from Riverview School's argument. I think that anybody who knows Counsel Leveque is aware of his town activities in that he is accessible to people that are not just within the town, but also on the Youth Commission, all the way up to any kind of veterans' activities, and who makes themselves available and well-known to his constituents. One of the things that does concern me about one of our councilors who is elected is the decision to support a gentleman over somebody who is also fairly well-known in this community, Amanda Converse, and that was on the Appointments Committee. And at a subsequent meeting, made a statement about supporting women in leadership. Barnstable has a lot of women involved in their town, and for that, I am grateful. So I just hope we take these kind of decisions into consideration when we're electing Town Council leadership. And I'd also like to comment on two other things. First of all, I hope we support the Canvas Overlay District. I think that's fabulous. And I'm not sure if this was mentioned in November. And while she wasn't a resident of Barnstable, I would just like to take note of Alice Brock's passing, who is fairly well-known. If you are familiar with Alice's restaurant, it was kind of an ode to Alice from Arlo Guthrie. So I would just like to commemorate her passing as well as we all celebrated our Thanksgiving. Many of us listen to that as a family tradition. So thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Marlee Slyon. I'm a resident of Hyannis. I was born and raised here on Cape Cod. I grew up in Centerville. I am here to support Matt Leveque for president of the Town Council. I've actually known Matt my entire life. He's known me since I was born. I babysat his kids as a teenager, went on family vacations. I can't speak highly enough of Matt. Do I agree with everything Matt does or says? No, but that's not the point. The point is leadership, who's going to bring a Town Council together and get something done. Matt represents every marginalized community, from Riverview to the Brazilian community to women in business. He supports and leads in a way that is done with grace and dignity. And I believe he can pull the Town Council together to actually get things done in the community. So I'm here in support of him.
Thank you.
Good evening, Puff Allen, Barnstable. I'm here to support the current Vice Chair on the council. He has stellar career in the police department. He saw people at their worst and always helped them. As the son of a Boston police officer, I learned 80% of police work is helping people. I found that Craig spends 100% of his time helping anybody that comes to him. First thing out of Greg's mouth is "we" and "us." His competition in Precinct 10, first thing he says is "me, myself, and I." I'm not sure why, but he's more self-serving. I don't want to go back to the doc days when the council from 10 was in charge. And I, to the, regarding the housing issue, if there was an angry mob here when the new leadership took office, everybody pretty much understood, right, what happened? People who were in here were angry despite the leadership's attempt to fix things. I was puzzled. Then at an April meeting, the Precinct 10 councillor sat there with a big smile on his face. "I'm yes in my backyard." And he, everybody applauded that. And what happened last month? We were sitting here, and for a housing issue at the Mashpee School, he stood up and said, "Recreation first." He flip-flops. I don't want a politician sitting up there at the dais that speaks out both sides of their mouth. And, and God willing, Craig gets in, then the Precinct 8 councillor can keep talking about how, what a razor-thin vote we have. I've seen, I've heard him say that a few times. Where is the, where's the razor-thin vote? When it comes to schools, our natural resources? Or do you not want the best-trained, equipped, and paid police force on the Cape? Where's the division? So Craig, with any luck, the town can move forward, and you can finish what you and President Penn started out. Thank you all.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Lisa Donahue. I'm here to support Matt Leveque for council, for president. Some things that nobody mentions about Matt is, I am part of an organization called Hopeful Outreach of Cape Cod, and we deal primarily with the homeless population. Matt, every Monday, Wednesday, Friday, or on Monday, Wednesdays, he is at the Faith Family Kitchen cooking for the homeless. And not only does he cook for them, but he interacts with them. They know his name, he knows their names. He comes out, he speaks to them, he treats them like human beings. We have a tremendous homeless population problem on Cape Cod, especially in Hyannis. And with people like Matt, you know, making them feel human and helping out. And I can go to Matt and say, "Do you know where I can find a sleeping bag? Or do you know where I can find a jacket?" And he's always there to help. So people like that is what we need on this council to be the voice of the homeless and the unfortunate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Michael Messina is here. I'm from Hyannis. I would like to thank you all for your time and your leadership. But when it comes to leadership, it takes more than just sitting, reading a piece of paper. It takes a lot of your time, your sacrifice, and you sacrifice your family and everything you have to put on the table when you sign up to be a leader. And my support tonight is 100% to Matt Leveque. This guy has the audacity, and when I say the audacity, to fill his truck three times a week with food to deliver for the most vulnerable people. Who does that? Every week, he's there. "Hey, I'm bringing food." He had already served over 10,000 people every week. That is a true leadership. Someone who not just talk, but do the walk. He's out there, talking, smiling, serving, every single day. It doesn't matter if it's raining or if it's snowing, he's there. He's always smiling, and he's putting everything on the table and sacrificing his time, his family, to serve the community that he loved. So I would like to please ask you to really look through the lenses and really choose someone who actually can represent this council, not just as a body, as a body, but actually doing the actual work outside those four walls. So I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. And for all the people that you have served that wouldn't be able to be here, but they know who you are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dawn, and I work with, within various local nonprofit organizations. And I'm also an overdose and substance use advocate working Capewide. I'm here in support of Matthew Leveque as the next Barnstable Town Council president. I met Matt back in 2020 as we were both volunteers for the Farmers to Families Food Box Distribution Program, serving others during COVID. Matt embodies service to help others. As a mother who lost her only son to fentanyl, I was thankful to see Matt attend and support the numerous opioid remediation discussions held within the Barnstable, within Barnstable as a community leader, thankfully, and also recently announcing the $50,000 grant from those Barnstable discussions and funds being donated to an organization I'm proud to be on the board of in memory of my son Trevor. Also, during those cold, isolated days of COVID, where some thought they had nowhere else to turn, Matt was able to secure a weekly AA recovery meeting location inside the gymnasium of Christ Chapel in Centerville, a place so desperately needed to those who, to continue their road to recovery while staying connected within their community. He has continued to serve our communities in various capacities, including many years of service to the town of Barnstable as a Town Councilor. I'm privileged to call Matt Leveque my friend and proud of the work and the service he continues to give within the town. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, thank you. My name is Dan Myville, and I am the chef and director from Faith Family Kitchen. And Matt Leveque, I'm here to sponsor him. He's been there for me. I've been out of work for over three months with a serious injury and surgery, and he's helped the community. And if you need somebody, it's never about him. It's always about everybody else. He doesn't do anything for himself. He's there all the time for other people. So I respect Matt Leveque and all his doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Karen Kim McGuire. I'm a citizen of Hyannis, resident of Hyannis. And I'm here speaking as a resident of Hyannis. Tonight, I would like to, first of all, as many people have said, thank each and every one of you for the service that you give. This is an enormous responsibility you have, and I've gotten to know a number of you over the years. And I really appreciate all the time and energy and effort you put into your role. It makes a significant difference. It's, what I would like to do, I also want to thank not only all of you, but I would like to thank President Penn and Vice President Tamish for their leadership over the past 12 months. And what I've noticed over the past 12 months is that I believe there has been an improvement in the functioning and the service of the Barnstable Town Council over that time. I mean, Craig, you had something in your, in your, in the information that you put out when you ran last year for Town Council member about making change and being positive. And I think that that, we have seen some positive changes that have happened this year. For that particular reason, I'm here to endorse Craig Tamish as President of the Town Council and Chris Clark as Vice President of the Town Council. In his campaign station, statement last year, Town Council Tamish stated that "The power and influence of any elected official comes from the people." He was and is a highly respected leader, and his unbiased leadership works for all of us, the people. Craig graduated from Northeastern University, where I worked in the co-op department. I worked closely with the Dean of College of Criminal Justice. I know what your training was with your bachelor's degree, and you also have a master's degree in public administration. You've not only been a police officer, you've served in the fire department. You have volunteered with community organizations. You're a volunteer with your church. And when President Penn has not been able to be here in person, you have provided a very thoughtful and calm and direct leadership, taking all opinions and information into consideration. And I really appreciate the way that you've run these meetings. I also had an opportunity to meet with you with the Riverview School and the executive director and the director of the Friends Forever program. And the comments you made about the impact of the Riverview School and how it's going to be a part of our community was very thoughtful. And certainly, I know that you will be good in working with them together. Chris Clark, I've known you for a long time, and you've served your community. You lived in West Barnstable for a number of years. And I see you everywhere. I see you, I see you on the street. I see you at campaign events. I see you at civic association events. I know you're a member of the West Barnstable Civic Association. When I talked to you about how you were going to be campaigning for your campaign this last year, you said, "I'm going to go around and go into each and every person's house." You wanted to do that personally. And you carry those ideas and that information forward for the people here in the town of Barnstable. And you listen to all, all opinions and all arguments, and then make a thoughtful decision. And you do also, Craig, and what I've seen is kind of a calm, forward-thinking, respectful, unbiased leadership from both of you, and I hope it will continue into the next year. Thank you so much for what you've done, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, President Penn, Vice President Tamish, councillors. My name is Brian Hughes of Hyannis. Tonight, I wish to speak to you concerning your vote tonight to select this next year's officers. I believe that the town will be facing more, not fewer, new problems in the years to come. We can already see areas of concern such as drinking water quality and quantity, rising sea levels, insufficient affordable housing versus increasing short-term rentals, an aging population, and a lack of a robust full-year economy. And these are only the issues we can identify now. There are bound to be other issues that will emerge. I will concentrate on the concept of task-oriented subcommittees as an example of new ideas recently introduced to help the town serve our citizens. I myself serve on the wastewater comprehensive plan subcommittee. Our subcommittee includes three town councillors and nine citizens. We are analyzing the town's complex wastewater needs and will write a draft five-year management plan as required by the Cape Cod Commission. We will be submitting this plan to the town council in August and will disband at the end of 2025. This subcommittee and other such subcommittees provide the town with a breadth and depth of attention to specific areas of concern. This focused, task-oriented approach would not be possible under the previous practice of either relying upon only the councillors themselves to digest complex material or understanding committees that themselves end up addressing multiple issues. We need new ideas and methods of flexibility, flexibly dealing with both old and new concerns. I believe that Councillor Tamish and Councillor Clark have demonstrated both the flexibility and adaptability to face new as well as old issues, and to do so in a courteous and open way that allows both allows others to express their opinions, their own ideas, and to learn from them. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Conrad Watson. And I thought this was the Matt Levesque hour for a minute there. But it was great to hear about you, Craig, and your background. I went to Northeastern, too. I grew up in the Cape, well, in summers in the 50s and 60s.
Could you share your name, please?
Yeah, I did. Conrad Watson.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And I came from a large family, eight kids, and we had neighbors, the Querks, and they had eight kids. And the place to go was Hyannis because there wasn't anywhere else. The only supermarket was the AMP. And after that, Daggett's came in, and then in the 70s, it was such a great place to come. It was so much fun. And then when the mall came in and certain other things happened, Main Street kind of went downhill. And I retired about five years ago. And I was in, you know, I'd buy all the buildings, mill buildings and stuff like that and do them over. And I couldn't help myself, I started buying real estate again. And I've been on Main Street, I practically, I spend more time on Main Street than I do at home. And I really enjoy it, and I really think Main Street's coming back. And not in a big way like some people think, but I think that, you know, I think there's so many positive things in Barnstable. I've met more great people in this town, especially government workers, like I mostly know the planning board, and Mark Els has been great. He gives me a cellphone, you ever need anything. And pardon me for being a little nervous, but if ever I needed anything, Matt was always there. And then I met Charlie. And Charlie's always there. Charlie and I were talking the other day about what a great town it is here and all the great people. And I have nothing but positive things to say. And I think Matt has been so helpful, I would hope that you can sit here for president. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Lynn, do we have any public comment?
Yes, Jane Ward is first. Jane, you may unmute. You have three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm Jane Ward from Centerville. I'm speaking for myself, even though I am on the Infrastructure and Energy Committee. And I just, again, wanted to echo the many people who have thanked all of you for your service. I'm a little bit overwhelmed with how tough your job must be as councillors to understand all the complex issues facing our town. And, you know, you do your best to get informed on them, but, and as somebody said, we are able to set up subcommittees to help when that fails or when it's more than you can handle. But I wanted to particularly thank you all for, some of you were on the council when the town recognized the climate emergency in 2020 and then went on to create the position of Sustainability Director. And my main reason for speaking tonight is just to put a huge shout out to Sean Hogan and his supervisor, Dave Anthony, and the incredible work that Sean has done in the last two years since he's been part of our town staff. The reason I'm speaking today is that I must have been either asleep or I was entertaining guests in August when it was announced that he was responsible for writing the $42 million grant that was awarded to our town for the renewable-powered microgrid project, which is going to serve the high school, the intermediate school, and the adult center, and create, with renewable energy, improve the HVAC system, improving both indoor and outdoor air, providing training opportunities for some of our students and interns, and reducing, I think it's 3,000, it's an incredible amount of greenhouse gases per year. It was kind of beyond my ability to remember how much, but it's something like 3,000 tons of greenhouse gases avoided per year. And the reason that I'm bringing this up is I think it shows the benefit of having a Sustainability Director. Several of us were on a call last night across the Cape with the Climate Action Network from the various towns. And the program of that group was to highlight the benefit of Sustainability Directors, which we're lucky to have, and Sean, and the town of Falmouth has, and their Sustainability Specialist, Stephanie Madsen. And Orleans is already getting some, they're sharing a Sustainability Director with the towns of Chatham and Brewster and with the help of the Cape Light Compact. And they also have an assistant town manager who came from Sustainability Director position at Plymouth. And when all these communities researched whether it was worth it to have a Sustainability Director, one of the key things, besides all the good things they could do in attracting support for improved energy efficiency, was basically, what's it going to cost and what's the return on investment for providing a salary for this person annually? And as we researched along, we were in our hunt at the same time as Falmouth, our Energy and Infrastructure Committee was looking into proposing this, across the state, Sustainability Directors generally either saved or brought in grants totaling eight to 12 times their salary. Well, 42 million is a pretty good return on investment for hiring Sean. And I'm not wandering along this for no reason at all, but I just want to say that if we were to, with our new leadership that you're going to vote on tonight, reconsider green community status, we would have opportunities to hire a team to work with Sean, because those sorts of positions are available to be funded for green communities only, not non-green communities. So again, I want to thank the town council and your leadership and your wisdom for creating this position. And I want to just congratulate and shout out many thanks to Sean and to his supervisor, Dave Anthony, for coming up with this incredible grant that's going to benefit our town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Sandy Fitzgerald. Sandy, you may unmute. You have three minutes.
Okay. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak this evening. I would ask the council tonight to consider Craig Tamish as president and Chris Clark as vice president. And the reason being is, I started last year, I was not familiar with the politics in the town, and I met with Mark Els last November, and he explained to me that Centerville was going through some transition, a lot of changes. And it's true. Centerville, we have the sewer project, Mother's Park, New England Wind One, the Centerville Playground, the Main Street Restoration. We have, our town needs to be really brought back together again. And Councillor Tamish grew up right on the corner of Park Ave and Old Stage Road. He has served our community for over 40 years as a leader. He's level-headed, he's non-confrontational, and he's very approachable. What I can say is that just in the town, in the village of Centerville itself, the last four or five months, our Centerville Civic Association, we've been seeing 30 to 40 residents every month because of community engagement. Chris Clark, although we may feel a little differently about Offshore Wind, when I was door knocking in Wasponsable, her constituents trust her, they respect her. I went through all of the town council meetings back to 2020. In important topics or presentations, Councillor Clark would always ask, "Where can the residents find this information? Is it accessible? Is it easy for them to get their fingers on?" And Wasponsable will also be seeing changes with the Eversource expansion and New England Wind, too. So although we have to respect our past, it's time to move forward. It's time to bring our community together. What two people can represent their villages, we are right now, we have so much going on in that they can bring the community together. On another note, I can tell you that Councillor Clark, I'm on her email distribution list, she is very forthcoming and transparent and honest. And I feel, I've called her multiple times regarding Memorial Day parades and whatnot. She's always willing to help me. So I ask you to consider Craig Tamish as president, Chris Clark as vice president, and to make the changes in really new broom, clean sweep. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you.
There is no further public comment on Zoom.
Any further public comment?
My name is Leon Levesque. My husband is Matthew. I'm not really a public speaker like he is, so you'll have to excuse me for being nervous. But I just wanted to support him for president, as I see the other half of his life. It's not perfect, but he gives everything, almost too much sometimes, to this town council. So I want you to know that he doesn't hide behind politics or maybe your job. He gives everything to our kids, to me, and I want you to know that how much in this town, that it's not a popularity contest. Like, oh, I know, you know, I know this person, so I'll get elected. He works so hard to do what's right, not just to be liked. And sorry, I get emotional because I hate speaking in front of people. But I just want to say, I am so proud to be married to him and all that he does for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Okay, seeing none. Do we have any council response to public comment? Councillor Schnep?
Thank you, Vice President Tamish. I just wanted to quickly respond to Jane Ward's comment regarding the grant funding that I believe we've received as a town or were in the process. And I know that it is a part of our town manager report, and I would like to defer any further questions of the town manager until that time, but just wanted to acknowledge her comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment? Any comment on my left? Councillor Neary?
Thank you, Vice President Tamish, and thank you all who have spoken. And Leon, you did just fine. It actually is a testament to have you come up here. I don't know that my wife would come up here. And regardless of who this council elects, we're fortunate to have some quality people that are really willing to put their name in the ring. I will say that with a caveat. It's a lot of work. And it's actually, it's more work than I think really anybody can fathom when you look at the breadth and scope of the project staff commitments that the town is responsible for and responsible to our residents. It's just, it's unfathomable. It's huge. And being in that position is very, very, very easy to become a target. You know, I've always said, it's really easy to throw rocks from the stands, but to actually get down there and have to receive those rocks that are thrown and then handle it in a fashion that is professional, courteous, and frankly, a good, you know, being a good human being. We have a vote this time of year. I always speak of the difficulty of my fellow councillors when it comes down to this, because ultimately, what we do not want to have is a fractured council. I will just say a couple of things, what I guess it was, if it were to be my New Year's wish list. In many cases, we are all kind of have our own ideas of what we think should happen or processes that should be in place. What I wish for this new council coming in, whoever the leadership ends up being, let's listen to both sides of the story, because there's always two sides to every story, right? Everybody has their agenda, and their agenda is the most important agenda as far as they're concerned. But everybody has an agenda. And I would like to see more conversation on both sides of an issue. And back to really what my friend Paul Phelan mentioned, you know, 90% of the stuff that we vote on is virtually unanimous. It's probably higher than that number. I don't know what the math is. It's probably 96%. So we're really only talking about 4% of the items that come down to, you know, a one to two vote swing. So with that said, I wish you all a happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and we'll all be relieved once this meeting's done, and we'll get on to some work next year. Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Councillor Levesque?
Thank you, Vice President Tamish. I just wanted to thank everybody, honestly, on both sides that decided to come in and comment and give an endorsement. Not my first rodeo. I was president for three years, learned a lot, learned a lot about my own limitations, about myself, and, you know, and really to have you, I wasn't expecting that. That was not planned, that my wife would come. It was her first meeting she's ever attended. So to have that, I really appreciate that. So thanks, babe. And obviously, my daughter here, Emma, want to recognize you. Thank you for being here. She's embarrassed, it's because she's 14. You know, and I need to respond, obviously, because I was accused of being a flip-flopper. Unfortunately, there's a spirit, you know, in politics, all the way from the national level down to the local level. And a lot of it's put out on social media with agendas all interwoven in between that and misinformation. And I'm well aware that there were some comments made on a certain social media website about me. There was an aha moment. Aha! We got Councillor Levesque. We got him. Because he said he's recreation first at the Marsins Mills Elementary. Because he said he's recreation-first at the Marstens Mills Elementary School property. It's not Mashpee, it's in Marstens Mills, and right in precinct 10. And if you look at the capital improvement plan booklet, you'll see in there, in the five-year plan, that there is a playground that is basically mandated for that piece of property. And Town Manager Ellis could vouch for that. It's in the CIP book. And worked with Andy Clyburn very closely in regards to that. Council Schnepp, that it was important that the public wanted parking and a playground at that property, first and foremost. I was very much in favor of that, to the point where it's actually in the budget. It's being reviewed year in and year out. And now there's a longer-term plan for the rest of the property. And for the rest of the property, I am very much open to the idea of housing. So what I said was, I'm recreation-first, not recreation-only. But again, something, aha, we tried to get him, right? They didn't get me, because I set the record straight, and I only had a little bit of time, but they got their soundbite. And unfortunately, there were councillors on this dais that actually contributed to that conversation. And that is where we are. That is where we are. It's a toxic environment, and it's created, unfortunately, and I think that's why I was nominated, to try to bring it back to a certain level where we can have conversation, and it isn't just accusation of what, aha, we got him. You know, it's a conversation, a rational conversation. And unfortunately, you know, I try to protect people, even sometimes when you're getting certain emails in your inbox that are derogatory, they're accusatory of what you are, of what, you know, it's an attack. And you try to respond with kindness and do things, you know, criticizing private, or you don't want to shame people in public, you know? But it's unfortunate that certain people who you could do that with try to shame you in public. So it's interesting how that works. Anyway, that being said, I really appreciate everybody that came tonight to endorse, again, not just me, but really what we're about, and that service over self. And I really do try to sacrifice for others. And I guess I need to work better on, maybe find a new balance. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other council comment? I would just like to echo some of what Council Leveque said. I thank everyone that came up to speak about both or all three of us tonight. Participation by the public is critical, and I thank you all for coming out, and I thank those that have sent me emails, texts, and phone calls. So, thank you. Moving on. Town manager communications. Mark, if you would come up, there's a couple, a couple of things we'd... There are several big things in your town manager's report this week. The budget calendar update, the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. If you could just discuss that, I think that would be of great concern to a lot of people with the proposed changes in the Article 97 land protection processes, some of the things they're looking at, and the ability for the public to make public comment to EEA prior to that.
Certainly. Markell's Town Manager. Actually, I believe Karen Novar's online, Lynn, but I'll just start by saying, Legal Department identified this. It was, you know, I think it wasn't obvious that they were, meaning that EEA was looking at a change. So we were glad that Tom Novar, I'm sorry, that's Karen Novar, Tom LaRosa. I called him Tom LaSorda the other day, if you remember who that was. You'll remember that, right, man? I hope that's not what's to come in my life. So, he caught that, we were glad he did. I've asked Legal to take it under review. We need to comment on this, and I think to the, you know, to what I'm hearing you all discuss today, we need to look at all sides of this and have a united comment on this. This could have significant impacts relevant to Article 97 and subsurface. So Karen, are you out there? And could you give a brief update? Basically, I've referred it to Legal at this point, and we've had a very short time to review it, but they have reviewed it.
Thank you.
I am here. Karen Novar, Town Attorney. So these regulations were contemplated by the Public Lands Preservation Act, which was passed in 2022, which, for the most part, set out a process for the mitigation and for the disposition or change of use of land or interests in land protected by Article 97 of the amendments to the state constitution. And for the most part, the statute was codifying the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. They had what was referred to as a no net loss policy to ensure that when land that is protected by Article 97 is changed, where the use is changed or it's disposed of, that there would be no net loss to the Commonwealth of parkland or other protected land. So the legislation contemplated that EEA would issue regulations to implement the legislation, and that's what this is. And so we are reviewing the regulations. There is a public hearing that was scheduled by EEA for December 17th. I believe it's in-person or hybrid, so I think you have to register ahead of time, but you can participate remotely. The hearing is in Westboro. And initially, the public comment period was actually quite short, and they just extended that comment period until January 22nd. So we have time to review the regulations. We are doing that now, and we plan to submit extensive written comments. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Did anyone have any comments or questions regarding that? Thank you, Karen. We'll be waiting for your update on that.
Thank you.
Council Schnepp, I know you wanted to address the microphone.
Thank you, Vice President Tamish, and thank you, Mark, for full report. Could you speak a little bit more to item number four about the grant that was awarded to us? I feel like there's some contingencies on this, and so that's why I wanted to make sure I understand if this is money in our pocket or if it's money maybe to come.
It's money maybe to come. But that's true in the prior one, too, relevant to the Sagamore Bridge. So, you know, I think it's very important that the public understand that until we enter into a contract with whatever the awarding agency is, typically, it isn't money in hand. And even when it's money in hand, there are conditions that must be satisfied when you receive that money for you to ultimately be able to keep all or part of the money. So, and that's what, part of what we manage, certainly within the town. So, at this point, I think, I believe, as I originally heard this several years ago, this is related to renewable energy, specifically, the offshore wind projects are part of the reason why we would be eligible. A little bit later, I heard that there were only two communities, I believe in Massachusetts, Summer... Nope. We have another voice out there. Should I stop? Shall I continue? Thank you. So, you know, we need to, we need to secure these funds. They are conditioned. I believe there's another, one other community on south coast of Massachusetts in Barnstable that are eligible. As far as I know, we're the only ones proceeding. We need to develop more information. We've given the geographic area that this network would go in, and we've begun discussions with our school department, and certainly with Sean, and broadening it to, you know, any other divisions or departments that we need to have involved. I think one of the key factors is that a future renewable, specifically, I believe it's the Park City Wind Project, though I say that, and we don't truly know exactly what the conditions are that need to be satisfied to enter into the contract to secure the money. And the reason we don't know this isn't because it exists and we don't understand it, it's because it's not clear. And we're working with the relevant agencies to determine this. Dave Anthony and Sean Hogan. We'll continue to do so, and we'll continue to share. It certainly is a significant financial opportunity for our community. I think what is accurate in here is that Sean Hogan did an outstanding job in positioning us to be able to secure these funds. So I want to, you know, I want to thank certainly the council for supporting that position in the past, and my staff for being able to select somebody of the quality of Sean. And Sean, he's a motivated young man. We're very lucky to have him.
Thank you, and I, we really do appreciate his addition to the town of Barnstable. Do you anticipate that any change in administration at the national level could have any impact on this funding?
Absolutely. I think it's, I think our eyes should be on everything. Well, you know, we're having internal meetings on, you know, immigration, on transportation, on housing, on economic development, on every aspect of what we do here locally, boots on the ground. And we'll continue to do so until that is clear for us. And then, you know, in each respective area, we'll report back to you on, you know, on how we would be proceeding or any impacts that we've seen. A lot of speculation right now.
Yeah.
I think we just got to hold our course, clarify, and then report back with accurate information. Can't say enough about accurate information. It's critical. Lots of websites and informa, you know, it's kind of like a, you know, a very rapidly moving world for information, but a lot of it's not accurate.
Right.
So.
Thank you.
Yes. You're welcome.
Any further comment on the left? Council Leveque?
Thank you. I normally don't echo comments. Once something's said, it doesn't need to be repeated. But I do believe it's important to really compliment Sean Hogan and the work that he did in regards to this. And I'm glad that it's, you know, finally in the town manager's report. The grant was originally mentioned, was originally announced on July 26th. And I know there was a lot of work that needed to be done in regards to notifying the schools, so I just, really important that Sean gets the credit that he deserves. And also, again, I just want to tip the hat to Councilor Starr, because he's the one who mentioned the sustainability coordinator in our strategic planning and putting that into action. And quite honestly, I didn't really know what it was. I, you know, I didn't, sometimes I think, you know, why should we expand staff? You know, do we really want to do that? We need to be careful how we spend taxpayer dollars, and so on and so forth, and, but, you know, I, this changed my perspective, that it's something that if we measure it correctly, it can be really rewarding. And not only, quite honestly, not only is it rewarding from a financial perspective, but Sean's a great member of our team. So, and he deserves the accolades that he should get for something, even a possibility of this even happening, because this is big. This is, this is big, go big or go home, right? And it could really be something if it's able to move forward and the funding's there. So compliments to Sean and Dave, Dave and Anthony for his support of him. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment? Council Clark?
Thank you very much, Vice President Tamish. And I too am proud of the work that Sean Hogan has done, and as Jane Ward had pointed out to us, that he has brought to the town many more financial dollars of benefit to the community than it costs us in having him as an employee. But in addition to being proud of Sean's work, I'm also proud of Brian Taylor, our harbor master, who received the 2024 Boater's Choice Award. And I say that knowing that there are many talented employees who periodically get recognized by the state or professional organizations. And I salute you as Town Manager for bringing on high caliber of employees to do the professional work it takes to town, for the town to grow. Thank you.
Thank you for saying that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on. Minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the December 5th?
So moved.
2024 minutes as submitted. Okay? Madam Cork, I believe this is a real call.
Thank you. Councillors Bloom?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Leveque?
Yes.
Ludke?
Yes.
Mendy's?
Yes.
Neri?
Yes.
Penn?
Yes.
Schnepp?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
Thank you. Communications from elected official boards, committee staff, commissioner reports, correspondence, and announcements. Do we have any? Council Schnepp?
Thank you, Vice President Tamish. I just wanted to make a quick note that this afternoon, at the Barnstable Adult Community Center, we had, I was able to enjoy a very delightful holiday lunch with a number of our senior members of the community. I want to shout out to the staff, Chris Cannella, Kelly Hawley, and everybody there who just put on a tremendous event. And two of the councillors up on the dais, Matt Leveque and Chris Clark, for participating. Matt with beautiful singing, and Chris for your most gracious hosting. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment? Council Crowe?
The, I think it's the 65th Annual Osterville Village Stroll is this Friday, and it's most of the day and into the night, so it's always a good time. And I was at the stroll for Centerville the other day, and that was also a wonderfully run event, and I want to thank Craig and the others from Centerville for doing that. And it was very enjoyable, and I understand they had a huge turnout. So, if you have time, come Friday. It's a lot of fun.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. I see no further comment. Orders of the day. Old business. Councilor Burdick, could you introduce 2025-049?
Sure thing. Item 2025-049, item of an old business and may be acted upon by majority vote. Resolved that the town council hereby authorizes a spending limitation for the fiscal 2025 of $500,000 for the Asset Management Revolving Fund.
Second.
Okay. Stills? Uh-huh, there he is. He snuck in behind us here. Mr. Mill?
Good evening, Vice President Tamish, and good evening, councillors. Mark Mill, Director of Finance, Town of Barnstable. This item for you this evening, just a quick refresher, was presented back in November. We've had an asset management revolving fund for a few years now, and normally, the reauthorization of this fund happens during our annual budget setting process. However, due to the state needing to pass some legislation directing communities as to how they may use proceeds received from the sale of property that was acquired through the tax foreclosure process, we could not reauthorize this fund until they pass that legislation. So, they passed the legislation recently, and so now we are here seeking your reauthorization of... of this revolving fund. The agenda includes an item to reauthorize it with a spending level of $500,000 on an annual basis, which is what it has been for the past few years. However, I was asked to present a few other options that the council would consider for the use of these funds. And they are listed here on this slide. Let me just expand it. Okay, can everybody see that okay? So the first option would be to not reauthorize this fund and close the balance of $262,000 to the general fund. And what that would result in is those funds being added to the general fund reserves. We could carve those funds out, similar to the way we segregate the municipal and school savings accounts and bring forward appropriations for your consideration as needed. Option two would be to reduce the spending limit. For example, we could authorize $62,000 for the remainder of fiscal year 2025, and then come back with a request for $100,000 for fiscal year '26 and '27. And at any point in time, if we reach those spending limits, we could always come back to the town council requesting an increase in that spending limitation. Another option would be to close the balance out of the general fund at the end of this fiscal year and provide a budget for outside professional services in the asset management general fund budget. Under this option, we could authorize an amount for the remainder of fiscal year '25, close the balance out when the year ends, and include a sum of money in the asset management operating budget, which is part of the general fund budget, until those funds are depleted. One other option would be to authorize a spending limit to the current balance of This would keep the revolving fund as is and set a spending limit currently at its current balance. And we could also provide a month's report to the town council as to the use of the funds. And you could authorize a, provide, or put more restrictive language around the use of these funds, which would require an ordinance change because the use of the funds are defined within our ordinances under the revolving fund ordinance, which is for the support and promotion of any expenditure related to the town's comprehensive asset management program. I'll stop there, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any comment or questions on my left? Seeing none. Comments or questions on the right? Councilor Clark?
Thank you very much, Vice President Tamish, and thank you very much, Director Milne, for your comprehensive overview of this issue. I, for one, am aware of a couple of opportunities where, at least one, where property was offered to the town. And especially if they are Chapter 61A or B properties where that the property owners get some tax relief for not maximizing the development of their properties, that should it come for sale, that the town has to respond in a certain amount of time. And I do think that keeping some kind of a revolving fund so that the town can be financially nimble enough to react would be the prudent thing to do. So I am not supportive of closing the balance. And I can understand crafting some restrictive language so that the town council has some input on it. But overall, I think that it would, that it is healthy to have some, a funding source so that the town can be reactive to either contract an appraisal or other professional services to properly and comprehensively respond to any of these opportunities that come with short notice. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comment? Councilor Schnep?
Thank you, Vice President Tamish. I agree that having some flexibility to spend funds on a potential acquisition is important to have. However, I know that we do have a couple other sources of funds in which appraisals and other real estate-related things are available through our CPA funding if money might be allocated through that process. But I do have a concern for it to be unlimited, and unlimited meaning up to the balance that we currently have, in that when this fund was created, generally those decisions were kind of directed to a small group, a subgroup of town counselors, because there was an asset management committee, and they were the ones usually directing the activity. So I'm a little concerned that, I'm not sure who's going to actually be directing the spending of these funds. And so having a little bit of limit, at least for now, seems to be prudent. I think the second option, which is sort of along the lines of what I was recommending at a previous meeting, might, you know, address some of your concerns, Councilor Clark, you know, where we'd authorize a certain balance, $62,000, and then allow for a certain amount in subsequent years to be spent. Again, I think it's our fiduciary responsibility to know how money is being spent. And I think, you know, we're always able to authorize additional money if we need more. So I would feel more comfortable with having a little bit of limit going forward.
Thank you.
Mark else, town manager? Just for clarification, excellent question by counselor. Whenever we enter into a contract, there's a multi-step process that's involved. One of them is, what's the funding source? So if this were the identified funding source, then that would be included. Director Milne would verify the availability. We also have legal involved, but not relevant to this issue. And then ultimately, I sign the contracts. From that, really, a lot of the authority for where it gets spent goes to the department director or their, whoever they delegate that authority to. In this case, it would go to David Anthony. And David would keep an account of how this money's been spent. Mark actually has the physical financial account, so we can run those numbers if you want to see how any aspect of this has been spent. So whatever limit you set, whether you hold with what you currently have, or whether you want to lessen it, for example, that accountability is there. We can give it to you immediately. We can share it in whatever way you believe is reasonable and beneficial. So, and Mark, I don't know if you have anything to add to that, but that's pretty much how it works for everything we do. Yeah.
Thank you.
Counselor Starr has his hand raised.
Okay. Counselor Starr?
Thank you. Part of my question was answered, but my question was, who makes the final decision? So David Anthony makes recommendations to the town manager? If he wants to do an appraisal? Is that how that happens?
You kind of have to put boundaries around that question in the sense that I'm responsible for everything the staff does, and I'm the one who signs the contracts. But obviously, for a 262, you know, million dollar budget, you're not, I'm not the one day-to-day managing once I've, once I've signed off. So I'm trying to understand the scope of your question, but town manager's responsible for this. And then I delegate to my subordinate staff. They keep the detail. Mark Milne, you know, enters it into the ledger, and that's how it proceeds. Yeah. So same for every, whether it's an operating budget, capital budget, whether it's an outside funding source, no matter what we do, we track everything the same way.
Okay, thank you. So I would express my support for the, keeping the, keeping $62,000 for this year and moving $100,000 onto next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Crowe?
Maybe, Mark, you can answer it, or the other, Mark. This revolving fund, we've been talking about land acquisition, is that correct? And is there any other, can this money be spent on anything else? And if so, what?
I defer to Mark on the boundaries of asset management. It isn't just land purchase, though. And the town council created this. They were looking to dispose of these properties, and in doing that, discuss when we bring in a revenue, how they like it would, how they would like it to be utilized moving forward. And so, Mark, do you, what are the boundaries on spending it on asset management?
Yes, thank you for the question. So, you know, as outlined in the ordinance, it is for the support and promotion of any expenditure related to the town's comprehensive asset management program. And so that's strategic, strategic acquisition or disposition of town assets. And that can include expenditures like title searches, appraisals, 21E investigations if needed. And, you know, those types of expenditures you would typically incur whether you're looking at a strategic acquisition or disposition.
One of the, just procedurally, so you can better understand as well, when we have something we want to undertake and there is a cost with it, one of my questions to my finance director is exactly what you've asked with it, which is, is this within the bounds of what the authorization or what the approval of those funds is for? And Mark will give me that determination, and then I will in turn say back to him, based on what he's provided me, proceed or don't proceed. And that's how we do it.
But it mostly has to deal with either buying or selling property?
Yeah.
Or does that property include hard property, like buying and selling a generator, or buying, selling something else? It's no, it's only property?
No, it's been, no, it's been real property.
Real property?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions on my right? Councilor Neary?
If I may, just to try to make it a little bit easier. So if, and if I'm wrong, please, please chime in, Manager Els. So the asset management group we sold off, there was some, like slices of property around town, and that's what created this fund. And that was probably two years ago, maybe, I think, when the, when was that thing, when we got the RFP or whatever, we sold those things?
Oh, boy, I want to say at least five, Mark. How many years, do you remember, Mark?
Yeah, it was back in fiscal year 2018.
So that money's been, just been sitting there, and many of the properties that we had had title issues, had, you know, land court legal stuff that had to be kind of ground through. We still have a bunch of these properties, by the way, so, I think, right?
Yeah, I think we only did about a third.
So that's where, that's where the, the, the funds, how they were originated. So I don't think that, I can't imagine unless we, you have a new directive on trying to get rid of these triangle pieces all over town, that there would be outrageous bills, you know, in excess of even the amount of money that's in that, in that fund. I would think it'd be thousands here and there as these projects get either reviewed or discussed, or try to find a determination of what we're going to do with them. So with that said, I'm a little at a loss of the conversation of whether sweeping this back into our, into our, I guess we're going to the general fund, I'm assuming. I don't know, right? Or just leave it there. I would just as soon just kind of leave it there. And if the council seems fit, that if there's a bill over X, maybe there's a discussion somewhere, but I would just, just as soon have it sit there, and then that will kind of give us a reminder, maybe we can get rid of some more of these assets that are in town that really are not providing any tax revenue. And maybe we'll take another bite at the apple someday.
Councilor Crowe?
So this was created by, well, was funded by sales of property?
Correct.
Okay, well, there wasn't a appropriation by the town to fund this. My question is, probably to Mark Milne, is I'm sure this, well, I'm not sure, is this money invested in some way so we get a return on this money while it's sitting in that account? Is that any different from what we have from the general account as far as it's invested? And if so, what are those differences?
So the money that we do have sitting in this account, it's part of our pooled investments. So it is returning, we are getting some investment return on it. However, by state law, that investment return must go to the general fund, so it's not added to this revolving fund balance.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none. The resolve as written is that the town council hereby authorize a spending limit for fiscal year 2025 of $500,000 for the asset management revolving fund. So that's what we are voting on now? Correct?
Well, there's an opportunity to amend.
Yes.
So I'll move to amend this item to authorize $62,000 for the remainder of fiscal 2025 and $100,000 for fiscal '26 and '27.
Second? Do you have a second? Okay. Okay, discussion on the amendment. Anyone? Anyone on my left?
Could I ask Mark Milne a question? I'm sorry, Counselor.
Why don't you go ahead, Mark, first?
Mark, would, would, would we do it in the three fiscal year statement, or would you do it per fiscal year?
We would do it per fiscal year. And so what I would suggest is that the amendment just be made for fiscal year '25, $62,000. And then when we bring forward the FY '26 budget and the revolving fund reauthorization article, we will bring forward a $100,000 spending limit for the council's consideration at that time.
Okay, thank you. Would you, just one, one second. So?
Do I need to revise, does that amendment need to be?
I think you would.
Karen?
You would withdraw that, and then the person who seconded it would also withdraw their second, and you would make a new motion.
Okay. So I withdraw the motion that I just made?
And I withdraw my second.
Okay. And now I'd like to make another motion to just, to authorize $62,000 for the, for the remainder of fiscal 2025.
Councilor Neary?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? It is amended.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Els?
I'm sorry, I'm trying to think this right through till the end. So, Mark, now we're taking a $262,000 remaining balance from the original revenue source and designating $62,000 of it for the remainder of FY '25. The $200,000 and change that's left in that revenue, I mean, the idea by the council at the time, whether it's up to you all, what policy you want now, but, was that we use that revenue, not general fund revenue, not other, as the revenue source for this. Mark, the $200,000, that goes back to general fund at this point, correct, unless the, no. What happens to that money and where does it sit? And does that, is that like the limit? And when we've depleted all of that, if it's not regenerated, then we have to have another policy discussion with council? Is that, how does this work?
So the $200,000 that has not been, that remains in the fund will stay within the revolving fund until the town council decides to end the revolving fund, or we spend it down if the revolving fund continues into fiscal year '26 and '27.
Thank you.
Just like all the other revolving funds, they will continue as long as the council continues to reauthorize them.
And in our normal process, that this would come before us in June, right? Because it's during the operating budget. And at that time, we could authorize the full balance that's existing, or chop it off at $100,000?
That is correct. You have the option to go to the full $200,000 remaining or something less.
Thank you. Councilor Ludke?
Yes, I haven't heard convincing arguments. I'm all for flexibility and nimbleness, and I haven't heard the arguments to take us away from that. And so I won't support this amendment. I think we should leave it as is. I think we should leave it as is so we continue to have maximal or maximum flexibility and nimbleness with this account. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Clark.
Thank you very much. I do understand that, that we have an obligation for fiduciary responsibility and fiscal conservativeness. But I do agree with Councilor Lutke that, that given the information from Director Milne that this is not going to be disposed or redirected to the general fund, that this money can stay to, to be on standby for work that we see in the future. And I say this with the knowledge that the ad hoc committee on asset management has yet to be engaged. So, I think that once this, that ad hoc committee has some traction, that this may be revisited and serve as an important tool going forward. Thank you.
President Penn?
Thank you. I also don't support the amendment as stated. I don't see the reason for it. There's been no questionable expenditures from this fund that we should be suspicious of in the past. And it's, the, the revolving fund in total is, is a reasonable dollar amount to address the issue that it's there to address. And I, I would, I would see to vote on option number four, actually, as presented by Director Milne. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any further comment? Councilor Schnep?
Thank you, Vice President Tamish. Without disclosing the content of a meeting that we held in executive session last week, this asset management fund will probably be likely source of due diligence for a possible asset acquisition. And I don't believe there's any limitation to that due diligence from the motion that we took in executive session. And not that that was my reasoning behind making this offer, but I feel that there, when it comes to asset acquisition or certain other asset management questions, that I would like to be fully briefed as a counselor on how certain monies are going to be spent. So, that's, that's where I kind of come down on this.
Thank you. Councilor Ovek?
Thank you, Vice President Tamish. I would echo Councilor Schnep's concerns, really, that, you know, again, in full transparency, believe that any expenditure, you know, half a million dollars, that's still half a million dollars of taxpayer money. And I think we should be able to discuss and decide on how that money would be spent in moving forward, you know, in, in lieu of, you know, where the leadership of the council lies at any point in time, you know, you know, they could be basically told that they need to look at this property or that property or this property and, and we're moving forward acquiring property and it's not being brought to the council. And again, with everything that's coming up, and I think that we need to be able to do our, you know, the sewer projects and possible schools and things of that nature, I think it's important that we review every, every dollar that's spent out of this account. Thank you.
Councilor Crowe?
Just for clarity, are we not given any say into how this money is spent or any forward knowledge before it is spent? Or are we? We're not?
Any further comments, questions? Okay, seeing none, we are voting on the amendment and, Councilor Schnep, could you reread your amendment?
Excuse me?
Could you reread your amendment? Does Town Clerk have it?
I believe it was just to authorize a expenditure of up to $62,000 for the remainder of fiscal 2025 from the asset management revolving fund.
Okay. Okay, so we're seeing no further discussion? Nope, excuse me, there is further discussion.
Just to make sure, say, for example, we, there is a property or something and it's above this amount, the town would have to come back to the council and ask for those funds prior to any kind of acquisition. What would be the devising consent from the town that would go through the council?
If it falls within the bounds of eligibility for this asset management revolving fund in, in a vote of up to $62,000, you are assigning that to me. You are giving me authorization. And then, it, it has been my practice over the last 10 years to discuss with leadership and then when leadership brings it to the council as a whole, the council as a whole, whatever level of detail the council would like. So, there is, if, if, for example, we were looking at acquisition, we needed an appraisal, if I gave the approval, Mark Milne says it's eligible, I give the approval, Dave Anthony proceeds with the appraisal. That's how it would proceed. It would not, as long it's, as long as, if it's, as long as that it is within the dollar amount that you've approved for that use.
Okay, I've done appraisals, but not on, on business properties or anything else, but I assume it's within a certain, small thousands of dollars at the most, probably. But I don't know of that for sure for business properties, but, but after that is a question of larger purchases or going through with a purchase that this could be possibly done with, by your office without the council, other than the management being aware of it. It wouldn't be of the council vote in any respect or council communication.
It would be, in my opinion, as town manager and my practice for the last 10 years, a failure on my part if I don't keep the town council advised. And, you know, I'm, I'm dealing with $300 million worth of capital, I'm dealing with $262 million worth of operating and then all of these sort of other accounts. And we report out very transparently those dollar amounts.
I'm not questioning that, I just wanted to question how the.
So, what I'm, what I'm describing is that, that wouldn't be my intent, but to your question, it doesn't have to work that way. Once you've authorized it and you've delegated through that authorization to the manager, that authority shifts to the manager.
Okay, thank you.
So, I think it's completely okay for, and it would come through leadership to the town manager to say, if you proceed with 62 or if you reauthorize the 262, on some logical increment, can you please provide us with updates as to how you're spending this? And the answer is yes. Actually, you can ask that for everything we do, so. But I don't want, you know, it doesn't have to come back to council once you authorize it. Okay, that's, that's maybe my short answer. I'm sorry if I said more than was necessary.
Mr. Ells, I, I think the, the question has come up. For example, you couldn't take $200,000 of this money and go out and buy a, a lot in Katoa with it, is that correct?
No, we can't buy land.
That's what I just want to clarify.
No, we can't, you know, again, it, it goes back to what you're authorizing and the, the, you know, the boundaries of, of what's eligible.
Correct.
Under the asset management program. And then, on top of that, there's all sorts of other laws and all sorts of areas that apply to certain actions by council and management. Certainly, land acquisition involves the town council, same as land disposition, so.
Exactly.
But an appraisal, sure. We, we would be able with this money potentially to go out there, but my approach has always been, I talk with leadership. I ask leadership if leadership would like to bring this to the full council for a decision. Now, that's not my decision, that's the leadership of the council's decision. The leadership of the council, for the 10 years I've been here, have made that decision. If you decide to bring it to the full council, it goes to the full council. If they tell me no, proceed, get the appraisal done, I go back and we proceed with that as long as we have enough money left that's been authorized for us to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Councilor Ovek?
I just have a quick question for Town Manager Ells and, and of course, appreciate your years of, of being that transparent, but obviously, this is a policy that could extend your time here with us of the town. So, with that being said, could it also, my question is that, could it also be expended for outside counsel in regards to deed research or?
So, here's how I would answer that question. Mark Milne, if we need to bring in outside legal counsel to look at some aspect of considering land acquisition and it's a hypothetical, you know, $4,500 consultation, does that fall within the eligible boundaries of this fund?
Yes, it does.
Okay, so he's answered me, that, that's actually, so my hypothetical is the actual answer. From that point, I'd probably let leadership know how we were proceeding and then I would say proceed.
Thank you. Just another question, it's probably to Mark Milne. Of the 30, 351 towns and cities in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, do you know of any other community that would have set aside funds in this way or would most often the cost for appraisals and due diligence be incorporated into an operating budget item?
I'll, I'll take that question, thank you. That would require some research to be done to find out how other communities do it, but I don't have that information with me tonight.
Thank you.
I, I only ask that question because I, I would say general fiscal practice is to include expenses that are needed within operating budgets, not, you know, that, that this was sort of an unusual opportunity that we had to set up an asset management fund. And it was the decision of the council at that time that, you know, instead of incorporating in, you know, the expenses of additional title work into a budget, they didn't want to burden any other town budget, that, okay, we have these funds and let's use that. So, part of my reasoning here is really to kind of get us back on track in what I consider more prudent fiscal management. But I understand where we're at right now, so my proposal was to kind of move in steps in that direction rather than just close down the fund. But it's not at all brought forward because of any concern about transparency or trust. It's really more moving in the direction of what I consider best fiscal practices.
Thank you. Councilor Turkelson?
Thank you, Vice President Tamish. Director Milne, could you tell us since the inception of this fund, maybe a couple examples on the high end in the amounts of money that we used for those expenditures?
I think we may have spent a couple of, some funds on appraisals. We were paying for a property manager position out of the fund for a number of months. And I do believe Director Anthony is there this evening. He may have more detailed information on what other expenditures we have used this fund for.
Thank you.
This is what I'm trying to understand to, to Councilor Schnep's point is, you know, I run a business. Do I want to know every $5 that leaves my business? No. But if somebody's going to spend $5,000, that would be important to me. So, I'm trying to get a sense of, how much do we need to micromanage this fund if it's small amounts of money for appraisals versus large sums of money? So, if David Anthony could speak to that, that would be helpful for me. Thank you.
Mr. Anthony, welcome.
Good evening, councilors. Happy to be here, David Anthony, Director of Asset Management. As has been discussed, appraisals kind of run the gamut. We've had appraisals as low as $800 for a pretty straightforward appraisal. We've had some more complicated appraisals that have approached $4,000 because of some of the layers or the systems or the, the market conditions that are behind them. For example, we had to do a market appraisal, we had to do title certification, we had to do verification of our survey bounds for the property at 259 Barnstable Road, which was sold and approved by this council. The money to do all of that work came from this fund. It was probably a $10,000 cost to return over $200,000 into the general fund. That was not a tax foreclosed property, so the proceeds went back into the general fund. We, in disposing of the Katoa School, for example, we had to go through an approval not required process where we divided that property, that 13 acre property into an eight and a five. We had to go out and have all of those documents prepared. At the same time, we worked with a consultant to help create a conservation restriction on the remaining section. We also had to pay to remove an oil tank, an underground oil tank, because that was one of the conditions of the transfer. So, included in all of that, there was probably around $20,000 that was spent in order to affect that property transfer. And that was done at a time when the Asset Management Advisory Committee then had changed its focus into the larger parcels that we had. So, that was appropriate at that time and that funding source supported that. We were able to contribute some money to the boardwalk behind the U.S. Custom House where we had to relocate a boardwalk away from wetlands, away from a perilous situation involving some private property, we're too close. So, we were able to do a notice of intent and we were able to do wetlands flagging to support that effort. So, we have had a variety of items that have been included in that. We've also taken a look and done some, some possible studies of some other larger parcels to see if they would be adequate for housing or if the highest and best use might be for some other use, where we brought in some outside consultants. Those ran between $5,000 and $8,000. So, the biggest expense was going to be on that property manager. When this fund was frozen, we had an opportunity working with the town manager to restructure the asset management general fund salary budget. We had a vacancy, so we slid that person over into that vacancy. We didn't lose that critical position, but we couldn't use this as the funding source moving forward. So, I, I think those are some of the things. We've had some smaller, some smaller expenses, $800 here, $1,000 there, which, I mean, it's real money, it's, it's on the smaller end and it's allowed us to kind of answer some questions about property. That flexibility is helpful. It's not that we can't bring forward requests for supplemental appropriations. And I, I think this council has been very generous when it's been for a good reason.
Thank you. Councilor Meadows?
Thank you, Vice President Tamish. My, as I often say, our number one responsibility is the financial fiscal responsibility of this town. Just because Town Manager Ells comes to us with things like this, doesn't mean the next town manager will. I don't think there's anything wrong with putting caps on things. I think it's the prudent thing to do. I think it's a good amendment. And if they need more money, they can always come to us, especially with the stuff we have on the horizon.
Thank you. Councilor Clark?
Thank you very much, Vice President Tamish. I was here last year, but I don't recall, did we take a similar vote to authorize a revolving fund last, for 2024?
I can answer that question. Yes, we, we did. And for fiscal year 2024, it was part of the budget item that we brought forward to the town council, reauthorizing all of our revolving funds, including this revolving fund with a spending limitation of the lesser of whatever the balance was in the fund of $500,000.
So, the money hasn't gone anywhere. It's, it's there on standby to do the work if needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilor Crowe?
It was mentioned before about maybe one of the committees it hasn't met might be able to discuss this in the future in a more in-depth fashion. I'm still confused about whether, which way to go on this. I think maybe that's the way to go. I think maybe that's the way to go is let one of the, I think it's the Property Acquisition Committee would be, the subcommittee would be doing this?
Property Management.
Asset Management. I think maybe that would be a better way since there seems to be some kind of a, some confusion as to what's best here. This is my opinion.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, go to a vote. Madam Clark?
The vote is on the amendment.
The amendment.
On the amendment.
Right. Okay, so. Berdick?
Yes.
Clark?
No.
Crowe?
No.
Leveque?
Yes.
Ludke?
No.
Mendez?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Penn?
No.
Schnapp?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Tamish?
No.
Turkelson?
No.
Bloom?
No.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, no.
Thank you. So we go back to the original resolution that the town council hereby authorized a spending limitation for fiscal year 2025 of $500,000 for the asset manager revolving fund. Do we have any further discussion on the main motion? Seeing none, Madam Clark?
Councilors. Clark?
Yes.
Crowe?
Passed.
Leveque?
No.
Ludke?
Yes.
Mendez?
No.
Neary?
Nope.
Penn?
Yes.
Schnapp?
No.
Starr?
No.
Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Berdick?
No.
I'm back to you, Councilor.
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you. Moving on to 2025-061. Councilor Mendez, would you, I'm sorry, Mr. Els?
Could I interrupt, sir?
Certainly.
Thank you. Could I ask that we're going into planning for FY '26? We'll be bringing this back again for '26. I think it is a good recommendation that it be referred to the subcommittee you've created and to hear that feedback from them because that's where this came from originally was a subcommittee. I think that same discussion, not now, but going into '26. So if I could ask for that, sir?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Mendez, would you read 2025-061, the appointment?
Yes, sir, Mr. Vice President. This is new business. This is item number 2025-061. This is the first reading referred to a second reading on 192025. Appointments to a Board Committee Commission, Conservation Commission, Jeffrey Kaschulak as a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2027. Disability Commission, Mackenzie Benito as a regular member term expiring 6/30/2027. Historical Commission, John Richmond, from an alternate position to a full member position to a term expiring 6/30/2027. Infrastructure and Energy Committee, Ron Regerio as a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2027.
Second.
Thank you. Okay. Madam Clark?
Councilors. Crowe?
Yes.
Leveque?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Penn?
Yes.
Schnapp?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Berdick?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Penn?
Yes.
Schnapp?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Tamish?
No.
Turkelson?
No.
Bloom?
No.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, no.
Thank you. So we go back to the original resolution that the town council hereby authorized a spending limitation for fiscal year 2025 of $500,000 for the asset manager revolving fund. Do we have any further discussion on the main motion? Seeing none, Madam Clark?
Councilors. Clark?
Yes.
Crowe?
Passed.
Leveque?
No.
Ludke?
Yes.
Mendez?
No.
Neary?
Nope.
Penn?
Yes.
Schnapp?
No.
Starr?
No.
Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Berdick?
No.
I'm back to you, Councilor.
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you. Moving on to 2025-061. Councilor Mendez, would you, I'm sorry, Mr. Els?
Could I interrupt, sir?
Certainly.
Thank you. Could I ask that we're going into planning for FY '26? We'll be bringing this back again for '26. I think it is a good recommendation that it be referred to the subcommittee you've created and to hear that feedback from them because that's where this came from originally was a subcommittee. I think that same discussion, not now, but going into '26. So if I could ask for that, sir?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Mendez, would you read 2025-061, the appointment?
Yes, sir, Mr. Vice President. This is new business. This is item number 2025-061. This is the first reading referred to a second reading on 192025. Appointments to a Board Committee Commission, Conservation Commission, Jeffrey Kaschulak as a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2027. Disability Commission, Mackenzie Benito as a regular member term expiring 6/30/2027. Historical Commission, John Richmond, from an alternate position to a full member position to a term expiring 6/30/2027. Infrastructure and Energy Committee, Ron Regerio as a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2027.
Second.
Thank you. Okay. Madam Clark?
Councilors. Crowe?
Yes.
Leveque?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Penn?
Yes.
Schnapp?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Berdick?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
Thank you. All right, that completes the new business. We'll be moving on to the elections. Why don't we take a five-minute break and we will reconvene.
At this point, I would like to turn the meeting over to Town Clerk Anne Quirk for the election of officers.
Thank you very much, Vice President Tamish. I'm going to read something to you first to make sure that we're all on the same page. To be elected, a candidate must receive a majority of the votes of the councilors present and voting. Voting must be by roll call, and each councillor states the name of the candidate he or she is voting for, or states that he or she is abstaining, or he or she is going to pass. Abstentions do not count as a vote. If all 13 councillors vote, the majority is seven, which is more than half. If 13 councillors are present and two abstain, 11 are voting, the majority would be six. If no candidate receives a majority, the candidate receiving the smallest number of votes shall be eliminated, and the balloting shall continue until one candidate receives a majority vote. Normally, what we do is we start with the president, and then we go to the vice president. If you want to switch that around, we have to vote on it, but that's the normal way we've done it. Also, we allow for speeches. So, for instance, if we start with the office of president, I name the two candidates that are in for president, and then I ask if there are nomination speeches by and for the candidates, and upon completion of the speeches, then we'll vote for president. So it gives everybody a chance to say whatever they want to say before they vote. Are we cool with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Madam Clerk, can we ask questions of the candidates?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So voting, again, will be roll call, and if we'd like to start with the office of president, we have two nominees. There are Vice President Tamish and Councillor Levesque. So do the candidates want to make a statement at this time?
I would like to make a statement if I could.
Please.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice President Tamish. So, not the first time I've been in this role, I did have the honor of being the president of the council in 2021, 2022, and 2023. My first two years, I was -- my vice president and partner was councillor Paul Schnepp, and my third year was councillor Jennifer Cullum. And it was a team effort. It was something that was a great learning process for me. I learned a lot about really how the town operates, the roles and lanes that defined by our charter, and I tried to do the best job I could, as you really kind of learn on the job, and rely on the qualified and highly talented individuals that work here in the town of Barnstable. And we really did the best we could, and we got a lot of good things done. We got an ADU ordinance passed. We were able to not have to go for a debt exclusion override. Now, again, some of these things aren't -- I can't take credit for them, and it's some things that are out of my control, but it was also a process of maybe educating the public, understanding about, you know, certain funding, you know, state revolving funds, subsidies, Cape and Islands, you know, water protection fund, all these different things, trying to educate the public, really working things out here on the dais. Form-based code, which was something that was a bit controversial, very new, and understandably, people worried about it. Two-way Main Street, all these different things, because really a big concern of making Hyannis a viable community, and really trying to redevelop blighted, undeveloped, underutilized property. And those things are happening. Again, as a full council, trying to get people's questions answered, encouraging them to reach out to directors, ask questions, use the town manager. If there's a question, let's have a meeting about it. Let's get together. Let's have a conversation. I did not unilaterally make decisions and tell the town manager what to do. And then there, you know, there was the wind farm, which brought a lot of controversy. It was -- these things have been, and again, I think the public -- and again, there's no blame, but to really understand that this topic of conversation has been taking place since 2018, that the negotiations basically for the first two host community agreements happened with leadership, unfortunately, you know, the passing of Jimmy Crocker. He's been gone five years, and those things were discussed by him when he was the president of the council. And thank you, Town Clerk Anne Quirk, for nodding your head while I'm saying these things, because it's true. Now, we learn, right? Hindsight's 2020, and we adjust, and we make adjustments from that. Were there times when, you know, sometimes my passion was maybe misguided, misinterpreted? It's hard not to take things personally when people make it so personal, and they attack you, and they say you're this, or you're that, when they don't really understand why you're doing the things that you're doing, and really the hard work that you put in to try to come up with these, not only, and especially as leadership, to compromise. You've got to work together, you know, and treat people, even if I don't agree with you, you know, treat them with kindness, not give -- not make it apparent that you're giving somebody an edge, but listening to everybody, and even if they're lobbing insults at you. So, I finished my third year as president, and there was a change in the council, and there was, you know, talk of different mandates or different things that the new council was charged to do, but immediately it became something that was, you know, and lobbing insults, one of the insults that we -- was there was backdoor deals. There was a lack of transparency. But honestly, the backdoor deals and lack of transparency are actually -- there's been more of them probably in the last calendar year than there has been in any of my years on the council. And conversations, taking property by eminent domain, that's why I was concerned about this $500,000, because if we get a council that's dead-set on acquiring property, because that hasn't been our policy, just acquiring property, that $500,000 can be spent relatively quickly if we have different irons in the fire. That's why I was concerned, that maybe this isn't something that, again, these things should be brought to the dais. These things should be talked about here, you know, topics of the ad hoc committees. You know, there's been a little bit of a derailment of certain ad hoc committees, you know, where they're talking about things that aren't necessarily -- they're important topics, but they're just not topics that maybe should be taken place. You know, we have chairpeople of ad hoc committees that are telling staff what to do. That's out of line. It's not in line of our charter. And a lot of, you know, the president doesn't direct the town manager to do his job when it's clear in the charter that, you know, he's not supposed to, you know, he's supposed to make that choice. He's supposed to make that decision. And that's happened, you know, and again, and there's no judgment on town manager else. That's the leadership that the council voted in, but, you know, I gave you an example. Fred Chiragodis was the member appointed to the Cape Cod Commission to represent the town of Barnstable. He had done that for, I believe, three, four, maybe five years prior, served this town council for 12 years, was a president for four years, is an attorney in town, a rotarian, very qualified individual to serve Cape Cod Commission. He was told that Mark Ellis, through a process, and again, a diligent process, as he always does, a transparent process, chose him, and then told him he chose him, and then went to a meeting, and I'm sorry to do this, Mark, because this is no, you know, but this is the truth, but then was told, no, my leadership, no, you're going to pick this person. This is the person you're going to choose. Had to call back Fred Chiragodis and say, I'm sorry, I was told to go in a different direction. And that's not to embarrass anybody, but that's out of line, and that's not supposed to happen. And if anything, if there's a discussion about that, it should happen here at the dais. And we -- you can't turn a blind eye to that, and that's just honestly, it's one example. And again, I'm not trying to make a power move or anything like that, but it is, there's these mandates to stop housing, to badmouth our business improvement district people, or, you know, Hyannis Chamber of Commerce, or, and then when there's decisions being made and meetings being held that affect those businesses, like what's happening with 35 Scudder, the Twinbrooks property, you know, that should be discussed maybe here at the dais when they have, you know, and that would be something I would do, because closing of a Hyannis conference center, maybe people might not know what I'm talking about, but that was bought by Riverview School, which is an incredible organization, by the way, and I believe we could work with them and do wonderful things with them. And it's a piece of private property. It's theirs, you know, they can do what they wish with it, you know, but now, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars that's off the tax rolls, with meals tax, rooms tax, and now, when they talk about building housing, they're going to be building it before the housing was built in the back, 20 acres in the back. No one was really going to see it, and it was a limit, you know, no one really knows this, but they offered 312 units, which honestly, I wasn't in favor of, but the purchase and sale agreement said you only have to have 200 units. And when they asked to have conversations with the new council, there really wasn't much of response. I do give credit to councillor Crowe, because I know he did meet with them in regards to that. But again, these are the things that have taken place. We need to have conversations on this dais, in front of the public. Everybody talks about Nantucket, and how they approached the blade falling into the ocean, and how they had these public meetings, and brought Avon Grid in, and GE, and held them accountable. We can do the same exact thing. Why didn't we have Avon Grid in here in the last year to hold them accountable, to ask them tough questions? You know, we can do that right here, and they used to come and report to us all the time. And, but again, it's up to the leadership to invite and give them an opportunity maybe to make it right, or explain something. I understand there's a trust factor with corporations. I'm not blind to those things, and again, you have, but you have to start somewhere. You have to give it a shot. You have to build trust. And if you're bossing and crossing lines with town manager's office, or directors, or, you know, town manager else is gracious enough to give us access to his directors. He doesn't have to do that. It could just be flow right through the chairperson of that, just like he's the head of that. Everything flowed through them. But, you know, we have directors that have to raise their hand and say, hey, you know, you got to talk to me. You can't go to my employees, you know. You know, consultations with the, I'm sorry, emails being sent, number of emails being sent by our town attorney discussing, hey, you can't do that. That's an open meeting law violation. These things are happening, and it's up to the leadership to put a stop to it. And so I appreciate being nominated. I believe that we should value our town employees. We're losing town employees because of this, again, not my words, but a toxic environment that's felt by a lot of people that work for our town, and we need to really kind of put a stop to it, encourage them, you know, and empower them to do the jobs that they've been trained to do, the educations that they've received, and support them, and maybe disagree, maybe try to move things in the right direction. And again, there's no perfect solution, but we're called to represent, and I believe we need the opportunity to represent. It's not a unilateral, leadership-only type thing. It has to come here to the dais, and so that's, you know, how I would lead. So again, I'm not saying that everything I did previously was perfect, because it's very difficult to do that, but even if you're wrong, you try to take an opportunity to make it right, and to vilify people, and really the bullying that is supported, the social media, and there's councillors here that feed information into that machine to bully other councillors, you know, and, I don't know, I just think it needs to stop, and there needs to be an end to it, and something needs to be said. So that's why I accepted the nomination to be president, so thank you.
Well.
Vice President Tamish, would you like to speak?
I would like to respond. I was going to discuss some of the issues that, some of the things that we had accomplished, some of the structural issues that I think were important both for the council itself and for the public, such as meeting at 6:00 PM, allowing remote access to the meetings by members of the councils, that everybody could participate, even if they're ill, or traveling, or called out of town for family emergencies, whatever it happens to be. You know, we've tried to be more transparent with the agendas by getting them posted on Friday as opposed to Tuesday before the meeting, so that the public has the opportunity to see what's coming up, and is able to comment on it if they so choose. The establishment of the ad hoc committees, some of them have been successful, some of them perhaps need a little bit of tweaking. There's, some of them have not met yet, so that's something that will be addressed. You know, we invite public comment, as councillor Levesque said, sometimes they're slinging arrows at you, but, you know, we certainly respect the fact that we are a democratic society, and we invite the public comment, good or bad. You know, I was kind of thrust into this job about five months ago. You know, I think that most of us, if you say who was, you know, John Kennedy's vice president, or who was George Bush's vice president, or who was, you know, Bill Clinton's vice president, most of us are going to walk around scratching our heads going, like, I have no idea. And I thought that's what my role was going to be for the year, a head-scratcher, but that's not the way it turned out. So it has been learning on the job, and for the past five months or so, I have tried to learn, I've tried to be as open as I can be in many different things. Some of the issues that councillor Levesque addressed, you know, I don't necessarily disagree on some of them. Some of them I do, you know. Losing town employees, I think it's a shame that we are losing town employees for any reason whatsoever. There are a lot of good people. I mean, I was a town employee for over 40 years, so, I mean, I know and have seen the quality of the town employees that we have, and, you know, I think we can put them up against anyone, and I do think that we have to try to do more to make sure that the town employees are respected, and that they're able to do their jobs without someone looking over their shoulder every 20 minutes. A couple of the things that you did mention was 35 Scudder. I agree with you, it's a shame we lost part of the conference center, but that was a done deal when I first heard about it. It was signed, sealed, and delivered. They announced it after the fact. It wasn't as though they came to us and said, this is what we're thinking of doing, what do you think? And we would have had concerns. You know, social media, social media is probably one of the worst things that's come along in some respects in our lifetimes. It has many good sides, but it has a dark side. There's no question about that, and I don't see a way of controlling that. I certainly think that all councillors should be respectful of our employees, of the processes, and not feed into some of it, but it does happen. The wind farm, that's going to be a continuing issue for a number of years, and I do agree with councillor Levesque's comment that it's been going on for a number of years. We have learned from the mistakes of the past, and we will not repeat them in the future, I certainly hope. You know, one of the things that we did, you talked about public involvement in getting the word out to the public, the series of water workshops, I think was tremendous, that we were able to get experts, the Fire District Water Department's in here, I mean, get everybody in one room for various topics and discuss them, and hopefully come to some kind of consensus about which way we should be moving forward, and at least giving the council and the public some knowledge that we did not have before. So, you know, my aim is to bring the council together. I would like to see the councillors be able to discuss something without any, without fear of someone, you know, calling them up after the meeting and berating them for how they voted, or a comment that they made. I mean, that's just not the way business should be transacted. So, you know, there was that perception that, you know, people were not free to speak. I have certainly tried to foster that, and will recognize anybody anytime, and, you know, you're more than welcome to speak your mind. We are not going to agree on everything. There's no question about it. The unanimous vote is great if we can agree on something, but if we can't, then we certainly have the opportunity to express our opinion in a climate that, you know, you're not going to be chastised for your vote. So, anyway, that's really all I have to say. I had a lot more, but I don't think we need to go into a lot of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Do, is there anyone else that wants to say something in support of either of these candidates? Oh, go ahead. Lanieri, please.
I look forward to good times ahead in '25. Goodness knows we could all use them. I nominated councillor Levesque. We both came on to the council the same year. It's been a long time now, seven years. It's been a long time. It's funny, I didn't realize it was five years ago we were talking about assets, getting rid of those assets. It's kind of scary. But I've seen the work. It's extraordinary. I wonder at times why either of you would want to put yourself into this position, honestly.
I agree.
Honestly, I really do. But, you know, thank goodness, there are two gentlemen are putting, raising their hands and saying they're going to give it a swing, you know. I nominated Matt, because I've seen what he's done in the past. He's taken a terrible beating, but, you know, if you unwrap the layers, you can see how many of the decisions and the direction that this council has gone on, same thing with Paula, right? We've seen these things kind of occur. This year was certainly a unique year, in my opinion, because it was much of a learning year, and I'm not trying to speak ill of that, but it does take some time to kind of get your feet underneath you. I was talking with a gentleman in town, and he kind of said, you know, maybe there should be a rule that no brand-new councillors are elected to leadership in their first year. And you kind of think about that, because it is such a learning curve. Whether the votes are there for either of you, I wish you well. I know what the town had with councillor Levesque. That's why I nominate him. Again, but when you're wearing the crown, right, heavy is the head, right, who wears it? So I wish you both luck. I will be voting for Mr. Levesque, and I'm looking forward to see where this all leads to.
Thank you, councillor Lanieri. I see that councillor Starr has his hand raised.
Yes, I do. Thank you, Anne Quirk. So I think, just a few general comments, I think that any constellation of these nominees would steer us well. I think the message we've heard tonight is it's sort of been a learning year, we need to have more discussions and get more issues onto the agenda and on the dais. So my, I guess my first question would be, how do we get, for each of these candidates, how do you see things getting onto the agenda? What, do you have a process that we could follow? Because it seems to be hit and miss. So can I ask that question of both candidates?
Absolutely. Who would like to answer first?
Well, I'll start on that. As you're aware, councillor Starr, because you attend most of the meetings, the agenda-setting meetings have been open to the councillors, within limits, of course, because we cannot have a quorum. But any councillor, again, with those limits, is welcome to attend. Any issue that you would like to see on the agenda can certainly be brought forward. Any issue that you would like to see on the agenda can certainly be brought forward, either as an idea or as a finished product, if you have an agenda item that's been worked on, or you have one that you'd like the staff to flesh out. We can move those forward. I know you have the flow-neutral item that you've been pushing for for a period of time, and we discussed it briefly at one of the meetings. And I had asked, as one of the new councilors, to be brought up to speed on that. And we are talking about having a workshop on that again. I know there have been several, but unfortunately, with the change in council, a lot of us may not be fully cognizant of all the ins and outs and pros and cons of flow-neutral policy. So it is something that's being worked on.
Thank you. Council Levek?
Thank you, Town Clerk Ann Quirk. So, again, you know, Council Star, I think it's just a matter of asking, you know? I want to discuss this topic. I want to make a resolve. I want to put this forward. And, you know, while you were on the council, and again, sometimes it's something that I, it doesn't matter if I agree or disagree, it needs to be put on the agenda. And there were even things that I knew were going to be, you know, firebrands and bring out difficult conversations and people thinking that something was, the reason why I was put on this agenda for this reason, and hot-button issues, and legal asking, say, hey, look, we need to clarify this, or whatever it might be. And it was difficult. But that's the job. You know, whatever the issue and whatever the people ask, you know, be a counselor, be a constituent asking a counselor, it just, it needs to be a discussion here on the dais. And you can do it. And again, you know, I agree, the six o'clock start in the meetings, I think is great. The agenda meetings, I think have been very valuable. I wish I could make them on Wednesday mornings. I can't typically because of my job. But, you know, it used to be, when I inherited the job, or when I got elected first, the meetings were on a Tuesday, and the agenda came out on Thursday. And I moved it to Monday, and I also required the staff, because the staff would be required to put something, it had to be done, the items had to be for the agenda, they could be done by Monday, put on the agenda for Tuesday. I said, you have to get it done the Friday before. So, and again, moving in that direction does give more transparency, does allow the council, because I would tell council, you can come to any agenda you want. But I didn't make it a formal policy. That was my mistake, you know? And that becoming formalized where it really is an open invitation, that, you know, I think that's a great idea, and I would continue with that. So I hope that answers your question, Council Star, but it's just a matter of listening and getting those, and working with the legal department, or if it's something with the planning department, whatever department we have to work with, you know, how do we find the best way to get that concern or that item on the agenda?
So can I just make one last comment? I think, excuse me, that, you know, there have been some opportunities missed this year, some because people will say, well, we don't have enough information. I think we need to get them out and discuss them, and get them, and I think there are opportunities for the future, including, we never got to the strategic plan. We talked about it since January. It's been trying to get on the agenda and never did. The training of new councilors was suggested by Ann Quirk early on in January and February. That never happened. Flow-neutral, we've been talking about for two years, and it's still, while we don't really know enough, it's still not on the agenda. We need to bring up green communities. We need to talk more, I think, specifically about how to get a housing coordinator, a specific housing coordinator in, because I think we all realize we need one person who can lead that effort. There's also the issue of the community rating system, which is still in process, and I hope we can move that forward for our citizens. So there are a lot of issues that I hope we can bring to, you know, up to the dais, and I'm looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Council Schnep?
Thank you, Town Clerk Ann Quirk. I'd like to sort of take a question that's sort of where Council Star was going, but first also to commend both of you for stepping up to take on this leadership role. It is a tremendous role, and I know whoever wins will have my respect in that role. So just wanted to let you know that. But I'd really like you to elucidate for a minute or two what your priorities are for 2025. Again, your priorities are what you think the town's priorities should be, that we need to really hit the ground and discuss. Last year seemed to be of high focus on water issues, but I think we have a lot of other things that are coming up, and I'd just like you to let us know what you think is the priorities that we need to be putting front and center.
As far as I'm concerned, there are two things. As I said, I had a list of things here that, in the interest of time, I didn't go into. As Council Star mentioned, one of them is counselor training. I think it's very important that the councilors, the new councilors, have some kind of a standardized training. You know, not to critique it, but, you know, you're handed a book with the town code, the town chatter, and the town council rules, and say, good luck, you know? And I think there should be meetings with staff, with the town manager, with the finance director, kind of like a mini town academy that they give. The strategic plan is critically important, also as Council Star mentioned. We did keep kind of putting it off because we thought different people would be able to attend that really weren't. But that is going to be, that will be a January project. As Mr. Milne said, you know, they do use it. As a former town employee, I know we did, as a member of the CIP task force for more years than I probably want to admit. It was critical to take projects and apply them against the strategic plan in order to try to move projects up or down and see what was necessary to be done to comply with the strategic plan of the town. You brought up an excellent point last week with the TIE and TIF rates. I think that's something that we really need to look at, see how we compare two other cities and towns on various projects. As a member of that committee at the time, and as I said last week, we probably, we just continued on using the templates that were already in place. Were they right? Were they wrong? I don't know. But we can certainly look at that and reevaluate those projects as they come forward, and have a discussion among the council of which way they want to go. Do you want to go 100%? Do you want to go 80%? Do you want to go 100% for five years? Do you want to go 100% for 10 years? 80%? Whatever it happens to be. That should be a consensus of the council and not just three members of a subcommittee. So those are some of the areas that I really think we need to look at. You know, wind is not going to go away. That will be rearing its head again at some point. We have talked about zoning. Council Levek mentioned the Form-Based Code and the zoning on Main Street. I don't know if it's right or wrong. We have a committee to look at that because of the controversy over that zoning. I don't know what they're going to come back with, but again, it's going to be up to the full council, no matter what their recommendations are. It's going to be up to the full council to evaluate that and either say, yes, it needs a little bit of tweaking, or no, it's fine, whatever that happens to be. So, you know, that's some of the major issues I think we have coming up. The, you know, Avengrid is still an issue, and it probably would be, it would be, not probably, it would be beneficial to get them in here and see what their plans are, to hear from their mouth. I mean, we've seen, talked about some of the construction schedules that they're having. If you drive down, obviously, I live in south of 28 in Centerville. If you drive down Craigville Beach Road, you drive down Main Street, you drive down, you know, Old Stage Road and Shoe Flying Hill Road, all you see are yellow lines and red lines across the road, and, you know, every 25 feet, a little yellow flag, you know, it's obvious things are moving forward. It would be good to get them in here to hear from the horse's mouth what the plans are. So, thank you.
Thank you for the question, Council Schnep. Priority-wise, I think that, you know, and again, open to all review of zoning. I think the purpose of the Form-Based Code wasn't necessarily just to build four-story housing. The Form-Based Code was put in place to give some sort of predictability in regards to development and redevelopment. And the fourth story basically allowed a better process and more possibly affordable housing in those blighted undeveloped properties. And those things are moving along. If these things are moving forward at a warp speed, which honestly, I didn't really feel would happen, being the fact that to buy property that already has an existing business that's not blighted, not an empty building, you have to buy that business to basically put them out of business or continue that lease. But if you want to go up, you necessarily can't leave that business open. So you're buying a business to buy a piece of real estate, to basically close that business, to build, to rebuild, to maybe wait out other leases, or, it's difficult. It's convoluted. So to say that was going to happen at a warp speed, I didn't, you know, it's not logical. So, but with the moving forward, you know, I would definitely be open to moving and reviewing that. Another piece of zoning would be short-term rentals. It's a conversation we should be having. By now, this time of year, we've already had a review of where we are in regards to that. We have a software, compliance, it's called, that allows for review of where we are in regards to that, not just amount of people that registered, but actual active, even in the peak of season, how many short-term rentals, and what that looks like compared to our entire housing stock. What, you know, are there corporations coming into play where they're buying up swaths of houses and doing those things? Because those were the fears that people had when it was first talked about back in 2020, when we, you know, put our hold on it and moved forward with the compliance software. So it's been a good amount of time. We should review that. Housing in general, really, that leads to my next thing. We just finished a housing production plan. Really looking at that, opening up and talking about it, again, I can't keep beating this, on the dais, where are we? Are we doing too much market rate? Do we need to focus more on capital A affordable, lowercase affordable, what that looks like? And, you know, again, but, you know, with these TIE agreements, you know, it's moving at a pace where we look like we're moving in the right direction. But we need to look and consider, are we going to get, you know, get to the point where we're getting saturated? And that's an important conversation to have, because again, it's not about being right, it's about getting it right. It's about a compromise. It's about trying to find those little pockets of housing that we don't have. You know, my whole thing is homeownership. Maybe it's a little selfish. My 22-year-old looked at me in the face after he graduated college this summer and said, Dad, I have no future here. I need to move away. He lives in Dallas, because he didn't see that he could have an opportunity here. So, but I think there's lots of young people that their voices need to be heard. How do we get in touch with, how do we get them, their voices, here at the town council? Because we need to concern ourselves with the future. All environmental issues, you know, sure, I would be open to having another conversation in regards to green communities, what that looks like, net zero, all these things that are coming forward through the state. We've got a housing bond bill. We need to look at how that affects us as a town. These are now state-mandated type of things. I would restore a good relationship with the Cape Cod Commission, having conversations with them. Their different ideas, not necessarily just doing what they want us to do. That's not what it is. But they are a part of our state. They're part of our government. They're a part of, you know, a review process for our projects on development in the town. We need to have a good relationship with them. That needs to be restored. So lots of, again, I don't want, again, I want to belabor it, I know there's a time, but there's lots of different ideas, things that we can move in the right direction, and just, again, so housing, you know, the homeless crisis, I mean, you can just go down the list, opioid, you know, obviously, we're moving forward with that and the funding for that. We're issuing our first grants, which is exciting. And, you know, our schools, education, our children, our English as a second language, our, you know, Brazilian population, that is such an integral part of our, you know, if, you know, there's lots of complaints in that ad hoc committee in regards to enforcement. And sometimes it's our lower class, and sometimes our minority people groups that are putting their trucks in their driveways on the streets, or whatever it might be, but they don't have a place to park. Maybe we can work together and find a place, you know, that where they can bring their trucks, so they're not in the neighborhood. Like, let's have a conversation, not just throw rocks and accuse people of, you're not following the rules, you're not following the rules. Well, let's, I'm not saying break the rules, but let's make it possible for them to follow the rules, and just work together. So, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, I'm going to ask for a vote. So when I call your name, please tell me who you want to vote for for president. And it starts with Council Ledke.
For president, Craig Tamish.
Mendez?
Matt Levek.
Neary?
Counselor from Precinct 10, Matt Levek.
Penn?
Craig Tamish.
Schnep?
Council Levek.
Starr?
Craig Tamish.
Tamish?
Craig Tamish.
I have to ask. Turkelson?
Craig Tamish.
Bloom?
Craig Tamish.
Burdick?
Tamish.
Clark?
Craig Tamish.
Crowe?
Craig Tamish.
Levek?
Matthew Levek.
Congratulations. You are now our president.
Is that what it was?
All right. The next group is the group that is running for vice president, and we have three people on that. We have Council Clark, Council Burdick, and Council Levek. So whichever of you would like to start first? Go ahead. Matt Levek?
I just would like to withdraw my name for consideration for vice president, if I could, and I'm going to fully support Seth Burdick. I believe he's the future of the council, and self-made person, and deserves an opportunity to be the vice president of this council. Thank you.
Thank you. So now we're down to, yes, Council Burdick.
I'll go first, if that works, and I'll be brief, as you all know. I value your time, and I value the public's time, and I value my own time, so, and we've talked about a lot of this before, and I'll just give you, I have some prepared remarks, which I will read through very briefly. So I thank you, Jeff, for nominating me to stand for election for the vice presidency of this body, and thank you, Matt, for saying that nice thing you just did. And I would like to say that I'd be happy to serve if elected. I would also like to say that I feel this past year that we have functioned well below our capacity as a legislative body, due in large part to a lack of unity and a pervasive sense of pessimism for the future of our town and the natural and ever-present change that occurs therein. If I were elected, I would gladly accept the challenge of supporting the president and the council in reversing this trend. I would strive to find consensus where possible while promoting a level of respect and decor and befitting of our position. Only by truly and actually working together can we craft and define and then execute the strategic vision which has eluded us of late, and begin to have the kind of frank, directed, constructive conversations that the town so desperately needs and our people expect of their leaders. And I offer you my promise of clear, eye-dispassionate, and logical leadership, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. So my, and very well said. I believe that we are unified in our dedication to the town of Barnstable, even though we may differ on the policies that best achieve the goals of our commitment to the town. The information that we regularly review takes considerable time to verify and update so as to establish the best groundwork for our decisions. At times, when I've looked into information I've received, then done further homework, I have changed my mind, not because what I received was incorrect, but because it wasn't enough to give me a comprehensive foundation for a decision. I trust but verify when it comes to accepting supportive information. Under the leadership of President Penn and Vice President Tamish, this past year has brought about some structural changes which have been well-received by most councillors and many residents. Our meetings start earlier, council agendas are posted four days sooner than previously done, we provide remote attendance for sick or otherwise unavailable councillors, and agenda-setting meetings allow for more councillor input than had been done prior to last year. The ad hoc committees admittedly have been ambitious, but they are already reaping benefits. As Chair of the Ad Hoc Rules Committee, I have been working with my fellow committee members and the legal department staff to update the rules under which the town council operates, something long overdue. The draft update is close to being brought to the council for review, adjustment, and adoption. Also, the zoning and housing committees have already identified issues to address and are shaping recommendations for the council's consideration. I do my best to be a conscientious councillor. I attend the monthly West Barnstable Civic Association board meetings to bring updates to my constituents and to relay back to the town local concerns. Additionally, I create and send a periodic councillor's e-newsletter, which is available to anyone to receive, where I share timely information about town and local happenings. Taking seriously my oath as town councillor, as well as my committee liaison assignments, I believe that actions speak louder than words, and I show my commitment through my actions as well as my words. Continually educating myself on municipal matters extends to attending meetings and being an officer of the Cape and Islands Municipal Leaders Association, where we learn about issues that are of concern of, for all the Capes' elected officials. Tomorrow's meeting starts at 7:30. I also learned from the Massachusetts Municipal Association, where I heard about the state-approved property tax work-off program. I brought the update of this program to the town's attention, and we subsequently adopted this provision to assist Barnstable's veterans and seniors with their property taxes. I have been an open space advocate, appreciating the value of our open spaces and embracing the Cape Cod Chamber of Commerce's policy that the environment is our economy. On the other hand, I am acutely aware of our housing crisis, having experienced housing insecurity in my own family. Through creative programs and with staff guidance, we are making progress with more yet to be done. My involvement in my community came naturally from my upbringing. I volunteer in church and other nonprofits, my community and the town, learning from my parents' example. The oldest of six kids, I grew up taking responsibility for more than myself, and I continue to do so. Not having been blessed with children, I feel that I'm in the position to do my share and a little more. It's time to get things done while the responsibility is ours, and I have the time and the support at home to accomplish this. Working with councillor Tamish, I'm prepared to develop a plan of action, build consensus, and work for the betterment of Barnstable. A valued friend with whom I periodically disagree told me that although he and I may disagree, we needn't be disagreeable, and that he supported me as a town councillor because he believed that my motives are pure. I'll admit that I'm not perfect, but I promise that I'll strive to work towards a better Barnstable that we call home. I hope that you'll find that I have the time, the stamina, integrity, and courage to serve as vice president of this council, and I thank you in advance for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, councillors. Does anyone have anything they want to say or questions? Councillor Mendez?
Just really quickly, as a community, we often forget who the long-term decisions we're going to make are going to affect. Most of us in this room won't be affected by these decisions. Sess generation are the people that will be affected by these decisions. I think it's very important on any body to have balance, to have a different, a difference of opinion. And this is nothing against Chris, but Sess opinions are different than mine because he looks at them from a different place. And it's important that we recognize that, that the things we are doing are for the future, and the people that they're going to affect deserve to have a voice, especially in leadership. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? And any questions? Okay, let me look over here. Everybody's good? Okay, are we ready to vote? All right. Councillor Mendez?
Councillor Burdick.
Neary?
Councillor Burdick.
Penn?
Chris Clark.
Schnep?
Councillor Burdick.
Starr?
Councillor Burdick.
Tamish?
Clark.
Turkelson?
Councillor Clark.
Bloom?
Chris Clark.
Burdick?
Burdick.
Clark?
Clark.
Crow?
Clark.
Levesque?
Councillor Burdick.
Ledke?
Chris Clark.
Chris Clark, you are now our vice president.
Thank you. One last item, is the meeting mine again? Okay. One last item is the adoption of the calendar for next year. I think you've all been provided a copy of it, and any comment or concerns with the comment, excuse me, with the calendar as posted? Other than that, do we need a formal vote to accept it? Okay, so we will have a roll-call vote, if there's no discussion? I'm sorry, Councillor Burdick?
Just curious on why the second meeting in June was, is that?
Because of Juneteenth?
Oh, yes, thank you very much, yep. Great decision.
You ready?
Any other comments? No? Okay.
Councillors, Neary?
Yes, I accept it.
Penn?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Crow?
Yes.
Levesque?
Yes.
Ledke?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
That passes.
Thank you.
Second?
Second? All in favor, roll-call.
Councillors, Penn?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Crow?
Yes.
Levesque?
Yes.
Ledke?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
That passes.
Thank you.
Second?
Second? All in favor, roll-call.
Councillors, Penn?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Tamish?
Yes.
Turkelson?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Crow?
Yes.
Levesque?
Yes.
Ledke?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Return.
To all councillors and staff, have a Merry Christmas.